Large and amazing bar.
The restaurant even features a window where patrons can see dumplings being made right on sight.
Pork dumpling, beef pastickers, we also have a vegetarian that we steam. And we also have some noodles. The top seller is the spicy beef noodle soup.
As for Crane's Bar, downtown resident and former bar owner Darren Crane wanted to open a watering hole for his downtown neighbors. He recalls turning down a larger space in favor of this one at the city tower lofts.
We were walking past the vault and I said, "What's this?" And he goes, "Well, it's storage." I said, "I want that." He goes, "Ah, it's so small." I said, "That's what I do. I do small, little neighborhood bars."
So what's the appeal of downtown for these entrepreneurs?
It has the edge that Hollywood used to have. It's innovative. They're accepting new businesses.
And it's not just new bars and restaurants popping up downtown. A new school will soon open its doors there. But as Anna Marcos tells us, it's no ordinary school. It's a boarding school with an international flair.
Set amidst LA's most iconic skyscrapers, the American University Preparatory School will have an international flair. Chinese businessman and founder Huang Wei even made sure the boarding high school has the right feng shui. It will be next to a hotel in a high-rise that formerly housed the old Lemley Theater. His team also made sure the horoscope provided a favorable day for the announcement.
The timing of this launch is very perfect. It could not be better because in a few days, we'll be celebrating the Chinese New Year, ushering into the year of the horse. And the year of horse is largely considered as a year of fortune, great success.
The curriculum has its own trendy acronym, STEAM, which stands for its high-tech mix of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. The student population will be as diverse as LA and the academic team, top-notch.
We're looking at college preparation for domestic and international audiences. We want to develop global leaders. We're interested in interdisciplinary approaches.
In the last 10 years, LA's downtown population has exploded from 10,000 to 50,000 residents, and that has brought a growing need for services, including education.
We've talked a lot about the renaissance of downtown LA, the new businesses, the new restaurants, the new people coming to live here. Having a boarding school here adds to that. It shows that downtown LA is on a new path.
It helps to have this type of an experience to broaden our ability so that we can have a more peaceful world, one where we're based upon trade and competition and not war and destruction.
Renovations are already underway, and come August, the doors will open to yet another educational alternative for Angelenos and students around the world. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The high school will eventually accommodate about 360 students. Curriculum, including room and board, will be under $50,000 a year. Next up is yet another update to the ever-improving Tom Bradley International Terminal at LAX. As Anita Bennett reports, another new feature has been added, this one designed with the airport's young visitors in mind.
It's an exciting day for these LA-area kindergartners as they take a beach break from school.
I played on the surfboards with my best friend Melanie.
It was not like a playground. It was a beach playground.
Instead of spending the afternoon in class, they were invited to try out the new beach-themed play area in the Tom Bradley International Terminal at LAX.
This is the very first children's play area at LAX, and it just signifies that we're trying to do anything we can to help our passengers, no matter how small those passengers are.
LAX celebrated the opening in December with a birthday party for the space. They even brought in a mascot, six airport therapy pups, and dozens of children from nearby Playa del Rey Elementary School.
Play area is fun because you can go up stairs and you can see through that wave.
The play area has a series of special features to make sure no one gets hurt, including this padded floor.
All of the materials here are, of course, safe for children to be using. The floor has extra padding in it. There's lots of little surfboards for children to play in that have rounded edges.
Located in the terminal's Viarigosa Pavilion, LAX Beach was designed by Westfield Airports with the facility's young passengers in mind. And these discerning critics give the play area a stamp of approval. At Los Angeles International Airport, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
Los Angeles World Airport's paid for the $350,000 play area. No money from the city's general fund was used. Honoring civilian volunteers on this anniversary of the Northridge quake, the city aims to better enforce laws that take guns out of the hands of abusers and a new park that's enjoyable for adults and kids alike. These stories and more in City Beat.
CERT or Community Emergency Response Teams is made up of volunteers who head into disaster areas to provide basic medical aid and help in search and rescue efforts. And on this anniversary of the Northridge quake, city leaders honored those volunteers.
The San Fernando Valley is the epicenter of disaster, and as a council member of the 12th district, I'm proud to say that the first CERT team was 30 members from the Devonshire Division Neighborhood Watch Group to help those who can't help themselves in a major disaster.
CERT is a program of the Los Angeles Fire Department and goes back to 1986. And just before the new year, city attorney Mike Fuer's office rolled out new efforts to prevent gun violence in domestic abuse situations. Under the current law, any person served with a domestic violence restraining order or criminal protective order must surrender or sell their registered firearms within 24 hours. The new protocol has the LAPD working closely with the city attorney's office to help prosecutors identify those individuals, file appropriate gun charges, and ensure that no defendants fall through the cracks. The city has opened yet another new park, the State Street Recreation Center at 716 North State Street in Boyle Heights. With the help of the California Endowment and the Los Angeles Clippers Foundation, the State Street Rec Center was selected as the first of three locations for 2014 to receive a playground and basketball court refurbishment. The refurbishment included the replacement of the existing playground equipment, the addition of a fitness station, and the resurfacing of the playground area and the basketball court. Council President Herb Wesson represented the city at the recent unveiling of Sung Kyung Chang Square at the intersection of 8th Street and Western Avenue. Chang, a businessman, has for years advocated for LA's Korean-American community on issues close to their heart.
He's been an advisor to Mayor Garcetti, Viarigosa, Han. He's been an advisor to my former boss, Nate Holden, Tom Labange, and to me.
Chang was born in North Korea and later made his way to Los Angeles where he achieved the American dream by becoming a successful entrepreneur in the clothing, retail, and wholesale business.
When talk turns to education or recreation, it's often children's programs that receive the most attention. But some of the city's senior citizens are asking for continued support for programs that keep their body and mind young.
The senior citizens are putting on a show at Glassell Park Community and Senior Citizens Center's sixth annual end-of-year celebration. They start slow with Tai Chi and move seamlessly into an upbeat line dancing routine they learned in their physical fitness class. The celebration held jointly with the Los Angeles Unified School District's Division of Adult and Career Education honored local and state leaders for their ongoing support and advocacy.
Programs for older adults, health and safety, parent ed are slated to be cut in June of 2015 throughout all the public schools and community colleges throughout the entire state of California. We want to thank you for being a leader, saving our division, our programs up until June of 2015, and we need you to continue fighting for us.
For his part, Senator Kevin DeLeone says we must not forget those who came before us.
As elected officials, regardless of what our age may be, what generation, that it's our role and responsibility to take care of those who took care of us.
Mayor Eric Garcetti and council member Gil Sadio, both of whom were unable to attend but represented at the event by members of their office, were also honored for their commitment to the city's senior citizens.
So each one of you that's sitting here, that makes those decisions at the state level, board level, we ask you to save programs for adult education. Join the mayor to save the programs for adult education.
This is truly a celebration, a celebration of the year of participating in programs and classes where you've been able to strengthen your muscles, where you've been able to expand your mind, and really get in touch with your soul.
And this group of seniors made sure no one was safe from some much-needed exercise. Even Senator DeLeone got pulled onto the dance floor for a few shakes, proof that even at their age, these seniors have still got a lot to teach the younger generation.
In this week's list of things to do, a weekly cardio class, music of Hawaii comes to Little Tokyo, and Japanese taiko drumming at UCLA.
Fitness guru and high-level trainer Nathan Ford will lead a new donation-based fundraising fitness program at the Barnes-Dole Art Park every Saturday from 9:00 to 9:45 a.m. You're invited to take part in this weekly 45-minute cardio class on the West Lawn. Donations will benefit Barnes-Dole Art Park. This high-energy group fitness class offers a full-body workout combining strength training and cardio suitable for the active individual. The first class is on Saturday, January 25. Barnes-Dole Art Park is located at 4800 Hollywood Boulevard. More details can be found at barns-dole.org. Hawaii's famed guitarist, vocalist, and songwriter Willie Kahai Alii, better known as Willie K., is back at the Japanese-American Cultural and Community Center on Saturday, January 25. He'll bring his unique brand of music from traditional and contemporary Hawaiian to blues and rock to audiences at 7:30 p.m. The JACC is located at 244 South San Pedro Street in Little Tokyo downtown. Go to jaccc.org for ticket prices and other details. According to a story written in one of Japan's oldest books, taiko drumming was created to lure the goddess of sunlight from her cave. On Sunday, January 26, you can help lure the goddess from her hiding place when you attend the Free Family Jam Drum Up the Sun Taiko Event from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Fowler Museum at UCLA. UCLA's Kyoto Taiko will put on a performance. You'll also get to make your own drum out of recycled materials. The Fowler Museum is located at the North Campus at UCLA. Detailed maps and parking instructions can be found by going to fowler.cla.edu. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
The Department of Recreation and Parks is helping youngsters show off their athletic skills and earn some coveted bragging rights. Anita Bennett explains.
After the regular season ends for young flag football and soccer players, the athletes have a chance to test their skills through the Department of Recreation and Parks' annual Valley Shoreline All-Star Playoffs.
It's fun like to play with my friends and get involved in playing a sport.
The best of the best young players recently made it to the championship tournament. It was held on the field at Balboa Recreation Center in Encino.
Lots of different parks. I think we have Balboa, Granada Hills, Cheviot, pretty much everybody who had fall sports like soccer and flag football participated or at least submitted a team into this tournament.
All of the teams were made up of players who normally participate in soccer and flag football games at their neighborhood city-run parks.
The competition was great in this tournament, and we were happy to be in it. The Rec Center put on a great show, and we're glad to be part of Northridge Rec Center, and we love it.
The tournament was open to kids between the ages of nine and 12 years old.
I've always liked playing flag football. I like running around the field and yanking the flag off somebody while they're running and throwing it back.
The tournament currently attracts about 150 young athletes. Organizers say it helps keep them busy, they make new friends, and they remember this experience for the rest of their lives. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
For more information on joining these youth sports programs, contact your neighborhood city-run recreation center. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, everybody. This is a wonderful day in Los Angeles. It's Friday, the 24th day of January 2014. This is the Los Angeles City Council. We're in the John Farrar Chambers of the Grand City Hall of Los Angeles, which was built in 1928. I want to call on the great councilman of the 8th district who's very happy every year because usually a team from his district is to be honored, and it's usually the same team. Please welcome council member Bernard Parks.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to ask Principal Ramon Corley to come up. Coach Garrett, all of the team and coaches, come on up. Colleagues, today we're here to celebrate Crenshaw High School Cougars football team's recent victory in the city section Division One championship game against, where's Joe?
He had to miss. Excuse himself, Mr. Parks, today.
So we'll put it on tape. Against Norbourn High School Gauchos, the Cougars had an impressive record of 10 wins, four losses. Crenshaw also beat Jefferson, Darcy, and Venice in the playoffs before taking down a seasoned Norbourn team 20-13 at East Los Angeles College. The December 6 victory gave the fourth Division One title to Coach Garrett. Coach Garrett has been making a difference in Los Angeles City Section since 1988. He is also one of the area's most successful and respected coaches. He has led the Cougars to a 14-1 record in 2009, and they played in the state open division game, which we honored them in 2009. The Cougars have won over 90 games under Coach Garrett since 2004. But according to those around LA City Section, certainly Crenshaw, Coach Garrett does much more than teach football, and because of him, these outstanding student athletes, the Crenshaw Cougars are currently ranked 29th in the state of California. So I'd like to have my certificate, Andrew, so we can present it to our principal, Mr. Corley, and have him make some comments. Andrew?
Sorry, sir.
There you go. So, Mr. Corley, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we'd like to commend you and these student athletes for their performance this year, and like to present this to you and have you make some comments.
First, I'd like to say good morning and thank you to our council member, Council Member Bernard Parks, for this honor of honoring outstanding student athletes. And I would not like to leave here without saying, none of this is possible without the hard work and dedication of several individuals that volunteer a lot of time because, you know, high school football coaches don't make a lot of money. But none of this is possible without the dedication of Coach Robert Garrett. And I think all the players and all the coaches that participate in this fantastic season would join me in agreeing with that. This man dedicates a lot of his time, his energy, his focus to not only coaching them on the football field, but mentoring them off the football field. He gets intimately involved, but not only their personal lives, but also their families as well. So I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you again, but also to salute him for all the hard work and the dedication that he has contributed to our school community. Crenshaw is a better place because of him. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Coach.
That's hot warming. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Chief. Appreciate you. We are grateful to accept this honor on behalf of our team. In reference to a safe area to be in, we're grateful that the city can provide services like the grid program in our area. That is very good for us to be allowed to participate in football nights, days, evenings. We're appreciative of that. But our team would not have been successful if we were not a team. We do not have a superstar on our team. We have a team, T-E-A-M, not a I and not a U. We have a team. And because of our team effort, we're able to accomplish these goals. So we appreciate you for honoring us, and we hope to be here next year as well.
Want you to introduce the student that's going to speak.
Okay, I will now introduce student Kenneth Davis. He's one of our leaders, and he will have a word.
Kenneth?
Well, it's an honor to have played for Coach Garrett and also to play for Crenshaw High, and also my teammates behind me. I've been playing there for four years, and it's been a great experience. I became a better person because of my coach. He taught me a lot of things, how to grow up and how to just be a man and also take leadership when all of my teammates are down, and also to help pick up my teammates behind me. This is a Band of Brothers that's behind me, and we had a great season. This is a band of brothers that's behind me, and we had a great season. The ones that are left behind, I wish them they have a great season and be back here next year. And I'm just grateful for the experience to be here.
Something with Cougar in it? Well, we want to thank you, Mr. Parks. We've got a few more. Crenshaw, all right, good job, Crenshaw. Crenshaw Cougars. Congratulations, thank you, Mr. Parks and coaches. Congratulations and the administration, great job. Mr. Sadio, we thank you. We're going to call the roll.
Bloomingville, Bonn, and Buscano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Caress, Corrigan, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Parks, Price, Weston, 11 members present, a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Sadio moves, and Mr. Englander seconds.
Next is communitar resolutions for approval.
Ms. Martidis moves, and Mr. Bonn in seconds.
Mr. President, there's requests to continue Item 1 to February 7.
So ordered, Item 1.
Item 2 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, item, it has been held. Members, does anyone want to speak on Item 2? See none? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
There's requests for that item to go forthwith.
Forthwith ordered.
Item 3 is an item for which public hearings have not been held.
Item 3, I'm going to check the cards here. Arnold Sachs, John Walsh, Mr. Herman. Arnold Sachs is not here and present. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Herman.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Please come to our website for some amazing information. Item 3 concerns removing various properties from the REAP. Now, Mr. Caress isn't here, but he claims that unless I have property, I'm not allowed to speak on it. That's his fascist position. Well, I don't own property at 1227 24th Street, but I'm glad that the landlord is being forced to make repairs to bring it up to code. I don't live at 2664 South Cochrane Avenue, but those of you who do know that your building was not up to code, the city came in when you asked them to, the city prevented the landlord from collecting rent, you sent your rent to the city instead, and then once all of these code violations were repaired, then it comes here, and then the property owner, the slumlord, who has repaired the slum conditions, is allowed to collect his rent. Now, I've been told by Mr. Caress that I'm not allowed to say this. So if you want to arrest me for getting up here and talking about REAP and talking about how all we renters are interested in this, fine. I'm waiting to be arrested or for disrupting the meeting. 4623 East Paula Street. Again, a slumlord landlord has been caught, and I'm telling you right now, if you have any code violations out there, and they're not going to tell you, they get money from the slumlords, go to the city, and the city will do a good job. These people own HollywoodHighlands.org. We are for the people who are watching. These people are for their campaign contributors.
Mr. Herman.
When it comes to rental units in Los Angeles, REAP, otherwise known as Rent Escrow Account Program, deals with violations of habability, right? So the city places the property on status for a citation for habability violations. The tenants have the right to option to pay either the property owner or the city of Los Angeles. You have rights here in Los Angeles. Don't be afraid to come here and get your rent escrow or your REAPs down to cost because this is the perfect place to vent out effective speak when it comes to the violations and citations, the injustice placed upon you. We are all affected by rental units that are not livable, slumlord conditions. So in order to improve the quality of our life in Los Angeles, we must take an action that represents the rental units, or you, the tenants. But altogether, the rental payments are used to pay for costs associated to the repairs at the rental property, not to be put into the general public funds. Mr. Mike Fuhr, welcome to Los Angeles. Good to see you again. Delighted that flight from Sacramento with you when you were first running. Great job, keep it up. All righty. And going back onto topic, Mr. Caress has no purpose to say that we're not effective speakers. We are effective speakers because we come here to challenge the government institute that deprives all of you Angelenos the right, not just to speak under the First Amendment, but the right to speak on behalf of an item, even if you are not living in that area, but you're impacted by the fact that you are a tax rate payer.
Mr. Herman is complete. Mr. Sachs, name called second time on this item. Thank you.
Sorry, I was at the mayor's help desk. Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. And actually, this whole agenda speaks volumes regarding what Mr. Caress talked about. There's a lien item. There's one item that's been held in committee, and there's these resolutions for rent escrow. And we have 10, 11 councilmembers here and their staff collecting $187,000 for the year for this sandbox stuff. It's ridiculous. You just got a report from a commission that Mr. Weston, Councilman Weston, put together that detailed some problems in the city, and you're going to sit around-
Excuse me, hold your time, please, Mr. City Attorney.
He should be talking about the REAP issue.
Thank you very much.
Well, you're right, sir, and I am venting a little bit off subject. So this is back to the manpower, the use of manpower. You have inspectors going out for REAP, but you have no inspectors going out to check sidewalks. You have no inspectors going out to check foreclosed mortgage properties that have gone into disrepair. And you're sitting here with your staff members, staffing, collecting money for REAP. Actually, this would be a better day for Councilman Weston to give you a day off again because everything is ending up in committees and not being discussed in front of the city council or in front of the public on TV where more people get an opportunity to listen. We're told at the MTA that down to three minutes because we're not on subject, or we, whatever. We're not even told anything. But nevertheless, this is a perfect opportunity to actually agree somewhat with Caress. But again, it comes back to answering about measure, Prop-
That completes your comments. All right, no other speakers on that queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
So ordered. Madam Clerk, at this time, it completes the numbered agenda. I have public comment. May I call Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman, followed by Ms. Ramirez, followed by Mr. Sachs.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You can't see my Jew face because the chairman here, Mr. Labange, is an anti-Semite. He won't let you see my face. That's fine, I've dealt with antisemites. 6 million of my relatives died in the camps. I'm here. Let me tell you right now, number one, 10-story crack house. It's at the corner of Yuck and Argyle in Tom Labange's neighborhood. He claims there's no graffiti on it, that it's all cleaned up. I live across the street. Okay, go to my website and see the pictures. And I want everybody to know, we're helping you in South LA because everyone knows in South LA, because of Bernard Parks and because of current price, you can't sell drugs on the street. It's not allowed. You make the cops stop it. But you can come to Hollywood, and you can come to Mitch's district and to Labange's district, and you can buy it. And I'm asking you, I'm asking you to answer the question, Mr. Labange. And the question I want to answer is, why won't you clean out the crack, 10-story crack house? Come to the website, HollywoodHighlands.org. You will see pictures of it. It's graffiti smeared, there's drugs going on, there's drug dealing going on. Remember, it's a containment area. You want to buy your drugs, anybody, come to Hollywood. That's where you can buy your drugs. And we found out yesterday that the two airport officers that were assigned to protect the TSA agency, now they're putting me up because I called you an antisemite. That's the way you get up. But the two TSA agents, the TSA agent who was murdered was because the two police officers, airport police officers, left their station to go to the bathroom and to hang out. The blood is on the mayor, the blood is on you. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, will you turn around? For the record, 1800 Argyle has been reported to the fire department. They're working on it and other agencies. I'm working with Mr. Since yesterday. Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Walsh, have a good weekend. Mr. Herman, stand up and come to the microphone and leave the building.
At your sacrifice, it is troubling, Los Angeles, that these elected officials continue to hinder, not just us as speakers, but hinder all of you, the public, by their actions. Take, for example, what happened with Mr. Ridley Mark Thomas. Was it okay for him to convert his garage into a home with a heater, an air conditioning unit, at the cost of whom? All of you, the taxpayers. Yes, the department must investigate this building and safety issue because it affects your homes, the quality of life in your neighborhoods when you allow a garage conversion. Get the damn permits. Permits protect people in this city. The injustice of not getting permits is the idea of what this city has done to all of us, and that's ignore the issue. And today, on our streets and sidewalks that are still unsafe, thanks to Mr. Weezer, with the barrier on Soto Street by Hazard Park, that barrier is still there. I cannot maneuver myself safely there without injuring myself. So all this council does is bring harm, 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 harm to the public. So when will these inspectors from the department by Mr. Luke Zempelman take a comprehensive investigation into my, your alleged allegations that Mr. Riley did nothing inappropriate or improper? You're abusing our government, you yourselves, elected officials that represent the law of local government. So yes, I take offense to that. And yes, and to this day, the racist discrimination injustice made by your alleged allegations that we're a threat? No, we're not threat. We're speaking on our First Amendment rights, Mr. Labange.
Ms. Ramirez, next speaker.
Good morning. This is a matter of principle. Deport, deport, deport. Again, we have a gang-banging epidemic vicious in criminal felons run amok. Again, this is in reference to high-rise buildings at 10535 Wilshire Boulevard, Los Angeles, California 90024, including the Westwood-Wilshire corridor and the Beverly Hills Century City area. Again, these are unsafe, noisy, filthy, hostile, full-service, and expensive high-rise buildings that, again, are infested with crackheads, drug addicts. And again, these crackheads and drug addicts and criminal illegal felon aliens, as well as black employees, AWAT and Antenna, who run the full-service place, do not help, do not help stop the hostility in the building against law-abiding tenants. And again, the Latinos who are employed there are also part of the criminal ring, including your Iranian criminal aliens who are also owners and who also run a criminal Iranian ring in the Westwood-Wilshire area. And many of them are also involved with the criminal illegal Latinos who are peddling drugs into the buildings to these junkies. And the crimes that you're having there are mail theft, ID theft, noise, chronic noise disturbances, ground theft, home invasion robberies, and again, full violations of your constitutional civil rights and all other rights. Again, let me just make it clear. You have the West LA Police Department, the Homeowners Association, and the owners who do not help the renters who are renting from these owners. They bounce you back for any complaints back to the West LA pigs, and the West LA pigs bounces you back to the homeowners, and the homeowners bounce you back to the owners. So you're playing Mickey Mouse with all these bunches of jackasses. Thank you.
Mr. Sachs, start the clock. Restart the clock, please.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Wonderful meeting at Metro yesterday. Today's headline in the Daily Breeze, and I'm not sure if it's in the Daily News because they pretty much print the same thing, that Metro is considering A or B, a fair increase in another sales tax. And so you want to say, why? But you're not going to get an answer because, you want to say why? Because Measure R was the answer. Measure R, $1.3 billion a year, $40 billion. Let's just take as an example, $600 million, which has been approximately how much they've collected in revenue in sales tax since 2009 for Measure R. So 2009, 10, 11, 12, 13, that's five years, $600 million. That's $3 billion, Measure R revenue. But then you get $3 billion in Prop A revenue because that's another half-cent sales tax. And then you get $3 billion in Prop C revenue because that's another half-cent sales tax. So that's $9 billion that Metro's gotten in five years, which is actually less than half of the $1.3 billion that they'd be collecting on a yearly basis if they had told the truth in the first place. But they didn't. So now you can believe them. Isn't that right, Mr. Bonn? And you're on the Metro Board. And our other outstanding gentleman, Mr. Corrigan, who's the budget guy, he's on the board, but he's not here. So you want to get up and you ask questions, but you can't because Metro has changed the policy. Three minutes on the consent, non-consent calendar. Yet they have rules. As a matter of fact, they made specific rules about what constitute not paying your fare. Specific. They have specific rules on the speaker card. They don't pay attention.
Mr. Sachs, that completes your time. And that is no other card here. So the United States Constitution allows free speech and public speech, and we just had that this morning. That completes our agenda. So Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for post-sten referral.
So ordered. How about some announcements, members? Any announcements with Bloomingville?
Yeah, this weekend, this Saturday, I'm doing a community bike ride, starting in my district office, which is on 19040 Van Owen, the corner of Van Owen and Van Alden. It's open to the public. We already have about 75, 100 people coming. It'll be a great, easy ride. Take one hour. Folks of all age, probably between 12 and 80 is a good age range. But anybody who wants to join the ride is welcome.
Thank you, Bob. It's going to be a nice weekend to do that. Any other announcements? There's a hike with the park, a hike for health with the Get to Know Program of young students. Everybody's welcome to come. Start at Boy Scout Road at 9:30 tomorrow morning, Saturday, just inside the park at Fremont Avenue. Avenue. Madam, Mr. CLA, all the motions been circulated? They've been signed and in the process, so we're complete on that task. Mr. Weston?
Waiting for adjournment.
All right, so see another of the announcements? All rise for adjourning motions? Sergeant, will you inform our guests? All rise for adjourning motions? Mr. Weston?
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Today I rise to adjourn in the memory of Henrietta Elmore Willis, who was the mother of our area planning commissioner and community activist, Gail Willis. She was born in 1919 in Texas, one of 12 children. They moved to, in fact, before I get to that point, she went to Southern, Texas Southern University, and when she went there, it used to be known as Houston College for Negroes. And she majored in math. They moved to Los Angeles in or around 1994, where she married the Reverend Daniel Willis. They had four children themselves. Ms. Willis was an elementary school teacher for 47 years, and she was also a member of Messiah Baptist Church, which is the church that I belong to, and it would always be amazing to watch this little woman, when the spirit would hit her, to watch her twirl around at the speed of light, just enjoying her faith and enjoying the service. She has worked on numerous political campaigns, and I'll be honest, she worked on several of mine, and I think that it's from her work that her daughter, Gail, decided to be engaged in politics as well. So, with that said, I ask that we all, again, rise in her memory, and to the Willis family, you have our prayers and our thoughts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Members, any other adjourning? Mr. Bloomingfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Eduardo Cruz. He's my executive assistant, Miriam Lopez's nine-year-old nephew, who tragically passed away this Sunday. And when one of our little Angelinos ascends to heaven early, it's, the whole city suffers. Eduardo, who's affectionately known as Wild by his friends and family, was born on June 22nd, 2004, in Los Angeles, to Claudia Diaz de Leon and Mario Cruz. He was a smart kid who had many dreams and aspirations. He was wise beyond his years. He could reason and understand complex ideas and would be able to explain these concepts to his friends and family. He was a fourth grader who attended Taz Charter School in Councilmember Price's district. He loved to play sports and being outdoors, going to the Natural History Museum and playing video games with his cousins. He loved going to school and learning, and he was a voracious reader who loved comic books and could read for hours. He was artistic and creative and would draw and describe in detail his thoughts and ideas. He had a real interest in science, and he wanted to be an astronaut, was infatuated with studying about space. For a class project, he wrote about Mars and recreated a model of the Mars rover with Legos, aluminum foil, and lots of creativity. Wild was a very loving, greeting family, had a very loving and greeting family. He greeted his family with tender hugs and warm and genuine embraces. He'll be remembered for his caring and selfless nature, the thought of others. He used to buy snacks for his cousins and brothers and friends. He always knew what they wanted. He had a speech impediment, but that never stopped him from trying his best and participating without regard of what his peers would say about it. Unfortunately, asthma took his life early. He's survived by his mother, Claudia, father, Mario, brothers, Sebastian and Santiago, two grandmothers, two great-grandmothers, a grandfather, 20 cousins, and a lot of aunts and uncles. So, Miriam, your city family joins you and your family in mourning the loss of Eduardo Cruz. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Sadio?
Yes, I also would like to talk about an extension of the city family. We have a real star on our staff, Jose Rodriguez. Many of you may have known him, he worked for Senator Alacón in the past. His father just passed this weekend. His father, like my father, come from Durango, Mexico, and he was born in 1944 and came to this country in 1973. Immigration laws were much easier then, and he was able to obtain his legal residency and get a driver's license. When he got his driver's license, he fell in love with the open road and became one of these long-distance truck drivers, and did that until his career ended in the mid-'80s. It's very proud of his son, Jose, very proud of his commitment to public service, and so he was always, like my father was, always asking us about what was going on in politics, what was the council member doing, what was the senator doing, what votes were taking place. And so, he's very, very proud of Jose. He enjoyed a good poker game, juicy In-N-Out Burger, and listening to Vicente Fernandez. He used to smoke and drink, but he stopped eight years ago, but he never stopped his love for his Dodgers or his country for the great opportunities that it gave him. A few years ago, he started having kidney problems. He's very diligent in addressing them, and his doctors were very optimistic, but unfortunately, he got cancer, and although diligent in his efforts to combat it, just most recently, a lot of his organs began to shut down, and he fought valiantly until the end. He survived by his wife, Ingracia, his son, Jose, his grandchildren, Tonito, Justin, Hannah, his sisters, Lupe, Amparo, Socorro, Yolanda, and Lola, his brothers, Nielo and Anastasio. And I said he survived by his son, Jose, and his son, let us be very clear about this, Juvenal, his son, Jose, and his son, Juvenal. And as I said, it's an extension of the city family. When our staffers lose someone, we all suffer with them. So, may he rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Members, I see no other adjourning motions. Let's go on and serve the city well. Every day is a blessing. This meeting is adjourned.